Okay.
All right, hang on. Sorry. Okay, I think you can go ahead and start.
Okay, call the meeting to order. And we'll take a roll call. We'll go alphabetical order. You have to sound off just like we did last week. Andy Burnier.
Andy Burnier is still trying to get in.
Okay, okay, we'll note that. Wayne Parlin. Walter Green Morris.
I am here.
Reese Solozano.
Here.
Yeah, and Al Boris is me and I'm here. So we, we have a quorum. Now we can proceed. This is the pledge allegiance, and I'd like to do just what we did last month, just take a moment, ten or fifteen seconds, just to think about the situation we're all in with. Isolation and the whole, the whole deal, and just, just take a break for a minute since we don't have flags. Okay, good. Adjustments to the agenda.
I have none, Al, other than just moving that public comment.
Okay, we can do that.
Oh, we got two Walters.
Yeah, that's Andy.
Yeah, hi, Andy.
Okay. Andy here, yeah, yeah. I don't see him, but I guess if he is. We've got a few things that we want to talk. I mean, I guess we can bring some of the stuff that we talked at the facilities meeting. Will come up when that item comes up. We want to talk about the expenditures, the flooring and that stuff, right? And then we wanted to do, talk about transferring the five percent authorized. Okay. All right. Public comment. Well, let's go. Approval of minutes from April sixth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Jefferson School Board. We'll entertain a motion to do something with those.
Walter, you're muted.
Yeah, we're not hearing you, Walt.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that. Discussion. All in favor? Maria?
Hi.
I'm gonna initiate something today.
Yes.
I'm not hearing that real well.
Okay, yeah, someone's microphone's on. I said yes.
Okay, Walter? Yes, no? Yes, and I vote yes. Three to the, three to nothing right now, so.
Yes. Yes.
Andy votes yes as well.
Okay, is, does anybody see an Andy? Um, um.
Yeah.
I don't see him here. There's, I'm.
Yes, I do.
Hi, Stan.
Al, up in the upper left corner of the iPad, you should have the options. We went over the other day to change your screen view. Didn't see more people. I think it's the second option down in the upper left-hand corner for you on the iPad. If you click that, you should be able to see more than one person at a time.
Oh, it says switch to active speaker.
Well, that will pop up whoever's talking at the moment, yes.
Okay, I, it came to you, you're talking, so that was, that's good. Okay. Very good. There's Andy with the beard. So those minutes have been approved. All right. Public comment, we're gonna move to the end. And go from there. The next regular meeting of the Jefferson School Board will be Monday, June the first, twenty twenty, at six P M. At the Jefferson Village School or remote access. The next meeting of the AOS Board is TBD. Remote access information will be shared prior to meeting with public. Agenda posting. Okay, good. You don't know that, Walter, yet. The, yeah.
Hey, Al, I have, I have Wayne on my cellphone right now on speakerphone. And he's trying to get online, but he should be able to hear us and we should be able to hear him at this point.
Okay. Do you know anything about the date for the AOS Board?
Oh, yes. The, the date is actually, Wes Craig, I think it's the twelfth, May twelfth.
Actually, is, we're not meeting in, in May, but we will have an MSMA training for new members, the fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
We had put off meeting because the next major item of business is the approval of the inter-local agreement. And we really thought that we needed everybody in a room to have that vote and a more, and a richer discussion conversation.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay, the next item here is the, MSMA will provide remote training for AOS. Ninety-three school committee members on Thursday, May the fourteenth, we just referred to. That's good.
And Al, that is, that's for new members, but also certainly for anyone who is currently a board member and is interested, but in Bristol, South Bristol, and coming to Nobleboro and GSB, we will have new members later in the year.
Okay. Very good. All right, now we come to the principal's report. Monday.
Okay, I'm unmuted. I think you all got my report. Did you get my report?
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll read through it. And I think it's in the shared drive if you want to go back and see the copy of it. The first thing.
Available, Maria. I'm sorry, Lindsay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
The school year certainly looks a bit different at the moment. I want to applaud the staff. JVS for the intense work they've done and the dedication they've shown to these students during the pandemic. They're working new ways in supporting students and families while managing a new system themselves. Really at the, you know, drop of a hat. So it's been quite an accomplishment. Teachers are working to provide instruction to families and attending professional development sessions that cover many topics. Support staff are reaching out to students to assist with work, assisting teachers to create paper packets for families with no internet, taking part in online professional development based around new programs or methods for working with students, as well as serving and delivering meals three times a week. Bus drivers are doing meal and educational material delivery and pickups three times a week. So anybody who wants the paper packets or needs them, they're going out on the buses and being returned to the school that way as well. So we're multi-function with the delivery routes. Custodians are disinfecting the building consistently. They're gearing up for their spring work, like getting the parking lots cleaned up. Kitchen staff are cranking out meals three times a week. At this point, we have done over thirteen thousand five hundred meals that have gone. When we closed March thirteenth, we started the next Wednesday, so about March eighteenth. So that's a significant number of meals going out. Our lower days tend to be about a hundred and fifty bags, which has a few meals in it, up to two hundred going out at a time. The Island Institute gave us four hotspot devices that we could share with families who didn't have internet access, but do have cellphone coverage where they are. So we've put those out to families. They are free through the Island Institute as long as we return them. So we do expect a few more over the next week or two. So we are trying to connect with families that need them and extend their coverage for internet access. Our participation, since we moved from the optional support activities to instructional activities and accounting for assignments, has jumped up. We have some classes where it's as low as ten percent. That might be, you know, a specials class instead of the core math and reading curriculum. Or occasionally the numbers in the lower grades are a little bit lower, where the kids aren't as independent. But in our middle level, in our middle level core classes, we're getting really around a seventy-five percent average participation on their regular assignments, getting, you know, interacting with the teachers and turning them in. We do have a wide spectrum of needs, wants, engagement levels and access levels across our two hundred students. And there's no one-size-fits-all approach that is working for everybody. To that end, we're working hard to figure out a way to meet people's expectations and continue to provide educational opportunities. And we all look forward, I know Anne will agree with this, to having a clearer picture of what works and what doesn't when this, if this system is needed again in the future. I won't say.
Yes.
If.
I do agree, yes.
Yeah. One of the things that we don't want is for our efforts to add to stress of families, to add negatively to their home environments, if they're worrying about other things. So we've been very supportive of families as they adjust the work to what works for them in their own capacities. We are not having consequences placed on the students for what we do provide. We are, however, providing feedback on their work and keeping track of what's coming in and what students are mastering and what they'll need work on. So we have a record of that when we return in the fall. We'll know where things stand. So we are keeping track of progress and providing students with direct feedback. And we recognize that there's a need in the fall. There'll be a big need in the fall to reassess student performance levels and readjust our curriculum as appropriate to address all of these gaps. Our enrollment is still the same, of course, hasn't changed recently. So that's the paper part of my report, which you should have or will have in the shared drive if you don't. The couple of other things I just wanted to let you know, we have posted our first grade and third grade position. If you remember, third grade is open due to a retirement and first grade is open due to the large class moving up and needing a second teacher there. No changes in our, in our staffing there at the moment. We have posted those on serving schools and we are getting applications, about one or two a day right now, since I posted it coming in. We've also posted internally right now our front office position. If you're not aware, Jessica Gordon has left us as of last Friday, so three days ago. So right now Kathy and I are managing the office. We have Casey, who was filling in for Jessica anyway, assisting us if needed. And we are, we're posting internally to see if we get any candidates. We chose to post internally first in case we can find somebody who knows our systems, like Power School, Swift Alert, Neo, and things like that, to ease the transition since we're in the middle of this time. If we can't find them, we will post externally as well and see what we get for candidates that way. So that's been happening. We are also, John and I will talk in just a second about the RFP on maintenance. The other thing I need to bring up first is public library. With the most recent announcement on opening, things being able to open if they can maintain social distancing and safety practices, I've been approached by public library and asked if they can open up again, two nights a week, as they normally do for book access only. My understanding is not to do the support programs, the children's activities, but to have a limited number of people at a time come in, get books and check them out. So I did want to request board feedback on that. Anybody has any thoughts?
I have no problem with it.
I don't, I don't either, really. I mean, I think, I like the public library, but.
I have no problem with it either.
I have no problem with it either. And the, the access normally is about six people at any given time. And so we'll be able to stay within, within the ten.
And I think you'll pay attention to that. You can prop the door open, so there's less touching of door handles.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a lot of measures they can do. It sounds like I'm not hearing any direct objection to that, so I'll get in touch with Sally and let her know to move ahead with her planning for that. And I would actually ask John to chime in for facilities.
Lindsay, I need to break in for just a second. I have two Wayne Parlins on this meeting and I need to get rid of one of them.
All righty, hold on a minute. I got one that hasn't come completely up, so I'll get rid of that one.
Okay.
Hopefully.
I just need to know that they're both you, Wayne.
Yeah, both me. I'm trying to get it on a, one computer better than the other one, but.
Okay, all right. If I know they're both you, I'll, I'll go ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
John, do you want to talk about the RFP and your portion?
Yes, I, uh, we did, we did the RFP, made a couple of changes in it, so the bid will be with the plowing and the ground maintenance. We hope to get that posted by the end of the month, maybe. Did talk to Jake at Jane H. He did agree to do the summer maintenance this year. The cost of that would be eight thousand eight hundred, which is about four hundred dollars more than last year. And it's about four thousand dollars less than the other bid. So.
One thousand less.
Four thousand less than the bid from the other competitor.
Yeah, and that four hundred dollar increase is well within the increases we've been doing over the past several years of this existing contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would, I would like to get everybody's opinion on that, so I can get him started. Possibly the week after next.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we extend the contract for, through the summer months due to the COVID. And, and then approve the, the current.
When you try to do, it coming back to.
I second that.
Okay. I agree. I think that's the best way to do it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Any further discussion?
That is, yes.
No, okay. Wayne, you on board? Do you hear that?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm good with it. It's good.
Okay, all right. All right, let's have a vote. Do it. I'll, I'll, I'll go first. Remember, we have to say who we are and what you say. I'm Al and I vote yes.
I'm Andy and I vote yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Maria votes yes.
Walter votes yes.
Okay, good. That's kind of silly, but we have to do that, so.
The RFP for the ground maintenance, I believe, is in the shared drive now. So if anybody likes, wants to read it, I wrote it, Lindsay fixed it. So that's there.
You get edited, you get edited, did you?
I get edited, yeah.
Look. What about, what about the flooring? That we, do we need to have a discussion here on the remainder of the flooring to be done? You know, we discussed it.
Yeah, so what I did was all the flooring that is currently questionable or bad is the upstairs corridor, two rooms upstairs, two classrooms. And then downstairs, the nurse's office and two other rooms, the music room and the I believe it's a speech room also need to be done. So the remainder of the floor work that is bad, that would only leave some classrooms upstairs that aren't done yet. So that work would be sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
For everything, or would it leave the, would it leave the two rooms you're talking about upstairs?
That would be, that would be the entire corridor upstairs plus the two rooms, plus all the downstairs that needs to be finished. The only thing that would be left was some classrooms upstairs that are currently in pretty good condition.
That would be something I'd do over the summer, right? Like they did last, last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to try to do it in this budget cycle, we probably could get it done, but I'd have to order the flooring as soon as possible because of shipping delays.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we'd also have to put money into that account.
Yeah.
That section, because there's only fifty-seven thousand by Rich projections to be left in there. So I think we gotta have a broader discussion on our budget, what we think the carryover is going to be.
Yeah.
And where we might move some money from into that to cover that.
I, I agree, Wayne. I think that's, that's what we talked about. That's what I'm trying to get going, some kind of a.
Well, maybe we ought to wait on that discussion till we get down to the financial parts of the superintendent's report, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, everything is going well in the facility. We haven't really had any problems. The heat has turned back to sixty in the building, except for the office area and the kitchen.
Yeah.
So oil usage is down. We're, we're still at about four thousand gallons of oil, which is good. I'm tracking the market price and as soon as the new budget becomes available, I'll probably buy again because oil is way down right now.
Good idea, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Policy committee, anything? That hasn't, we haven't done anything with that, anyway.
Well, Maria, this is the term that keeps going. We haven't added to her plate with extra meetings at this point.
Okay. All right.
You're too kind.
All right, here we go. Superintendent's report is next. Financial statement, we can do that, or?
I'd like to start with the finances and ask Rick to take a look at where we stand and connect that to the conversation about from what cost center to what cost center to get the funds you need for those floor repairs.
Oh, this is fancy.
Okay, so this is the budget that I just printed a few hours ago. And kind of went down through to look at each of the cost centers. And a lot of this is kind of dependent on there, there are going to be some charges that are not reflected in here, obviously. But I would say with regard to regular instruction, most of what you see here is, is taken into account for regular instruction for the remainder of the year, even the May and June invoices for secondary tuition. And so I would say that somewhere in the neighborhood of probably two hundred thousand dollars, five percent of which is, is about a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So if you needed or wanted to take some money out of here, I, I think we could sort of, you know, Lindsay and I and Craig sort of sit down and talk about it, because there's some other areas that are over expended that I'm gonna have to find some money for. So this is a, this is a category, as you might expect, that would be available for, for transfer. And, and that makes sense, because it's the largest one for the most part, and you always want to have the most money in the largest one, so that the five percent transfer actually equates to a, a fair amount of money, if you have money left over. For special education, again, we have about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand right now. There are some shared costs that are, have not been charged out yet, so this one, again, may or may not be too, too close. It may be pretty close. So I, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we, we not take any money from here. In fact, again, I haven't really done so, any projections about particular lines in here, but again, I do know that there are shared costs in this that have not been billed out yet. So I feel pretty okay with this one, thirty-nine, leaving it where it's at. And then as we, again, in June, if money, more money becomes available after Candy starts billing the, the shared services, and I could let you know about that.
Okay.
Uh, CT instruction, you have a, a whopping three hundred and eighty dollars there that it's absolutely available. You can go ahead and take that anytime you want. Other instruction, although there are going to be a lot of savings here, you're only allowed to, you know, transfer fifteen hundred dollars of it. Absolutely available for transfer. No problems there. Student and staff support. Again, these are, other than the salaries, which are encumbered, again, I would not expect a, a lot of a, a lot of cost savings here so much. I mean, you have a couple of thousand in nurse services, maybe some stipends and stuff that, that did not get paid. Right now, you have about fourteen thousand left in the cost center. Five percent of that is about twelve thousand dollars. So we're right almost at the five percent left in that particular cost center. System administration, about fourteen hundred dollars left in that line. Again, not even five percent left in that, that particular cost center. School administration is over expended by three thousand dollars, so I'll have to go to the, a couple of the other cost centers. For example, system administration, maybe student and staff support and pull, pull down. I'm sorry, I hope I'm not scrolling too fast, but I, I'm just trying to get, get to the idea that because this is over expended, I'm gonna have to cover about thirty-two or thirty-three hundred dollars worth of costs out of that line, out of some other place to cover that. Likewise, now for transportation and buses, it's a little bit different. Because we have an incoming revenue offset. Again, that transfer in from the bus reserve most likely will be used to cover that ninety, ninety-three thousand dollar cost or and then you're gonna get that back to replenish into the bus reserve as a result of the FY twenty-one subsidy. So it's, this is line one seventy-nine is essentially a shell game where I've got the same amount going in, but I have to reflect that the, the purchase was actually made so that it's on the record, so I'll be working that issue. But I'm not terribly concerned, although it's right now it's sixteen thousand. It's really probably in the neighborhood of about seventy thousand up, so we probably would be able to get some money out of that, out of that cost center as well. And finally, facilities maintenance. I really didn't look at any of these, because I, I'm assuming that for the most part, this is where you're gonna want all the transfers in, into, and currently John is a guy who, who likes to spread that money around. So you have about fifty thousand dollars left in that one. We have a, a couple of months of electricity. May and June, that should cover that, that nine thousand should be able to cover that. The heating, you know, you, I, I, I'm not sure if you're gonna order any more oil this year, probably not. I, I'm not even sure if you're gonna order any more wood, but nonetheless, I think you could probably cover it. Those, those costs are about fifteen hundred dollars a load, if I'm not mistaken. So you're gonna have a little bit of money left over in some of the lines here, but for the most part, you're gonna be transferring into this cost center rather than out of it. And then finally, debt services wash, it'll be paid out. And then general for, for the subsidy for food service. Again, this is a guesstimate. Not sure how mu, how, how a food service is gonna shake out at the end of the year. We probably will be getting some COVID money for, for those services, but I don't, I don't know how much. And, but if we can cover any, any overages in that area with COVID money, that's most likely where the, the vast majority of the COVID money would go. Because frankly, that's where the vast majority of the money is, that is outgoing, is paying for school lunches and stuff, so. Yeah, because frankly, that's where the vast majority of the money is uh that is outgoing is paying for school lunches and stuff, so. Um, so that pretty much ends my report unless you have any other questions.
No.
John, how much money do you uh, do you think you need for the floors and any other projects that, that you're looking at?
Uh, really, no, a big project. We're looking at the floors and the floors are.
Yeah, the sixty-three.
Sixty-three thousand.
Okay.
Everything else we've pretty much done in-house.
Okay, and then you need, you need the approval so that you can order the, the flooring and then once that's in, they can, they can start anytime really, because.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And how much is in the facilities right now? It looked like amount remaining after encumbrances and everything. Is that about fifty-nine thousand? Is that the same number?
Yeah.
Let's drop some from the budget report. Is that fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, okay. That's different than the budget report we got. Okay, so it's fifty in it and John needs sixty-three. Um, any idea what the fuel would cost, John?
Uh, we won't have to purchase fuel this year. We'll, we'll purchase fuel again in the next budget cycle. We're, we're set for this year.
Okay, I was just wondering if we should get it now while it was cheap, that's all.
Yeah, I can call them and, I can call them and talk to them about market and see what we can get it for.
Cause I filled up my oil tanks here at a dollar forty a gallon, but that was number two.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So Wayne, I think, you know, we should, we should put money in there for fuel. Um, you know, have him keep an eye on it and if it makes sense to purchase it now, great. Um, but you know, just really keeping an eye on that market.
How many gallons do you need to top it off?
Uh, we're at four. It's a ten thousand gallon tank, so leave a little room. We could probably squeeze about between forty-five and five in it.
Okay. Oh. You probably look at it. Yeah, I was gonna say seven or eight thousand.
Yeah. I mean, come fall, it's gonna go up.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Doesn't matter that they're giving away crude, they're still gonna go up.
Right. Um, well, it's probably not gonna go much lower either because the transportation cost is gonna be the same no matter what, so.
Yep, yep. Now's the time to do it.
I think so.
Well, see, if he um were to be in a conversation with him and trying to find out just what um, you know, what we could get it for and have, have the knowledge that um we could set aside some money, you know, via um motions and stuff that have that ability to do it without uh having to call a special meeting or something, you know.
How much, how much of that fifty thousand do you think is actually gonna remain in there? Thirty-five or forty, safe?
Yeah, I was just looking, I mean. We won't be using any of the like summer sub, we won't be using any of the sub stuff benefits.
Yeah.
Uh, the remaining in the building maintenance services was, was uh planning to be used in flooring.
So.
Uh, and the supply line can be used.
One eighty-four will be spent, one eighty-five will be spent, one eighty-six is available, one eighty-seven will be spent, one eighty-eight and eighty-nine are available, one ninety is not available. There may be a little bit of money left over, but I'm not sure now propane will, uh, I don't know how much is in your propane tank. So I don't know if you need to fill on that as well. Oil and heating, uh summer sub could probably go. Uh maintenance manager benefits, that's eighteen hundred dollars there. Services, ground maintenance services, line two oh seven will be spent. Uh, equipment repair, not sure.
Yeah, that can, that can go.
So, um, you know, you probably have about fifteen thousand safe, clearly safe. Uh, you know, maybe some more, but you know, at least fifteen to twenty, I, something in there.
So to top the tanks, I think we're talking, what, what do we say, John? Nine, nine to ten thousand?
It should be under that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, could we scare up seventy thousand dollars out of regular instruction for this section and still have enough to cover your other shortfalls?
Yes.
In the other areas?
Yes, as long as, right here, remember, this is not really sixteen, it's probably more like seventy and I think.
Yeah, I understand that.
As long as I have, right, as long as I have some money to cover this and some other ones and remember, you know, as things go on.
Right.
So I think as long as you take the money completely, that seventy thousand out of reg ed, you'll be fine.
Yeah. And, and John, the electrical going down, uh, the outside lights, is that something that we've already, already planned for financially or?
Yeah, yes, that was in the twenty-one budget.
Okay. How much, how much was that?
About fifteen thousand. We figured fifteen thousand and that depends on how much wire we end up pulling. If we only end up pulling half of it, it'll be less. It's kinda hard to judge until we get into it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
One thing, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Walter.
Is that a, is that a project that we could do earlier or is it scheduling issues or?
Uh, it could be done at any time now.
So, but that, that, that's a great point, Walter, and I, I, I haven't heard too much frankly out of, out of Jefferson about a concern for the FY twenty-one budget. And I know I'm hearing it from Nobleboro, I'm hearing it from Bristol. Uh, you know, the, and, and from Great Salt Bay, the towns of Great Salt Bay as well. The people are, are concerned about the amount of money that, that is going to be available for next year. So I think, uh, you know, i- if you can, if there are things that must be done, then I, you, you, you need to get them done. Knowing that next year, uh, there may very well likely be a curtailment of, of subsidy in some form or fashion.
Yeah, I, I would like to if possible, you know, if we can, if we can find the funds for it, which I think we can, is to do the electrical at the same time. Um, and then that way we knock that out on this year's budget. Um, and then when we're actually talking about twenty-one's budget, we can start talking about um, some other options like and today, not ready to go into it by any means, but uh, the electrical um sign at the front of the, at the front of the road, you know.
So probably, Walter, I should give a heads up. I'm not sure everybody's aware, but our sign has been messed with the last few nights. Somebody with access to letters has been putting very juvenile inappropriate messages up on our sign overnight. Um, so we've spent some time, the sign is currently empty because I can't leave up letters for them to rearrange and play with um at this point, but I think it will be back up again before too long. The, it's been a wishlist item of mine for a long time to have an electronic sign down there that you control with a computer. It'd be a very nice, modern feature. That'd be easy to change messages on and would withstand windstorms and rain and snow, uh, which our current letters don't. So right now, if you drive by, that's why our sign is empty.
I just wanna ask, does anybody know if there are any town prohibitions against electronic signs sometimes?
No.
A town may have one.
Uh, no, they just had a discussion about the Peaslee sign being too bright uh, a few months ago and it turned out that there are, there is nothing and their sign is perfectly fine, so. Unless you're going to like light up the sky with it.
You just never know.
Yes.
Um.
I wouldn't wanna live across the street from it, for sure.
No. Well, the Amish enjoy it because it gives them light all night long.
You know that for a fact.
Makes it easier to get up uh in the middle of the night.
So, so if it were possible, uh, to do not only the floors a, and the electrical, uh, that would be what a, a desire of the board to do out of the current year of funds if, if they were available and could be done. Yes?
Uh, yes, and the fuel, heating fuel, would that be more or less of a priority than the lights, I guess?
Well, I would say this, um, you know, the fuel is, you know, is, is gonna be relatively the same price at least probably through the middle of June. I mean, I think it's probably the last thing that we could go for and still make it underneath the current money and it's probably the least expensive of the three and we could probably find dip, money in different areas to do that. Uh, obviously, the floors are the most expensive, so that would be the first one we would act on and then start working on the electrical, if that's what you wanted to do. And then we could, the last would be to refill the tanks before the end of the fiscal year. Does that sound like a plan that the board could get behind?
That sounds like a plan I could get by.
Yes, me too.
It makes sense to me. Get it done.
Yes, me too.
All right. What, what we need though is we need some flexibility to be able to pull that off. I'm gonna have to be looking and, and and transferring money a- as I can, where I find it, as soon as I can, because we, we have to get the stuff on the ground, ready to go. Uh, I know certainly, again, the floors, I think, John, I think uh you, you need to get that in the, in the, uh, in the mixer so that we can get stuff on order. Uh, and I think we can go ahead and get on that. The electrical, uh, if we could have about two week delay on that or, or is that possible, John?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and still make it in, right?
Do we know how much the electrical is gonna cost?
We, we had budgeted fifteen thousand dollars to be on the safe side. Hopefully it'll be less than that.
Yeah, and, and if we budget ten for fuel, um, I think we'll be on the safe side for that as well.
So, so about ninety thousand dollars, give or take somewhere that. And I think, uh, again, as, as we sort of settle the budget or, and execute the rest of it for the rest of the year, as we find this money, we transfer it down uh, to take care of the, th- those three things, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, I agree to that.
Okay. Well, we would need a motion to tell us to do that, so.
So I'll do the motion, uh, Wayne motion to authorize the business manager and board chair to transfer up to five percent between budget categories as needed to meet state guidelines.
I second that. And hello, Chris?
Who is that that seconded? Walter?
Um. Walter.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? No.
Not from me.
I see a, a head shake no from Maria, so. Pretty amazing. All right, all in favor? I'll vote yes. Al?
Andy, I vote yes.
Maria votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
No, Walt votes yes.
Me?
Wayne votes yes.
What about Walter? Walter votes?
Yeah, yes, Walter votes yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, very good.
And John, tho- those will be the same tiles that we used already, right?
Yes, it's a different color upstairs with the same tile.
Same quality.
Yes.
Yeah. Are the, are the ones for replacement, are they tearing up like they did downstairs, really?
Yes.
Are they?
They're shrinking and the gaps are opening and the corners curl up.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Upstairs, it's, upstairs is wherever they put a rug. A lot of times if they put a rug in it, it holds the heat into the floor and it melts the clay tiles.
Oh, boy, okay. Very good. All right, good.
If I can, if I can chime in just for a second, the motion and vote you just took actually takes care of the very last item of business on the agenda as well as addresses your facilities issues. So just when we get there.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Taking care of that.
Okay. Old business. Nothing.
Nothing.
New business. We covered pretty much everything. To approve the following teachers for a second probationary contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Amanda Flag, grade five, Jessica Grady kindergarten, Mandy Groth, special education, and Sawyer Pinkham Health and PE.
So moved by Wayne?
Second by Maria.
Okay. Um discussion?
Yeah, Lindsay, you wanna weigh in here?
Sure, I can. Um, it, it's all a little bit unusual because the, imagine being a first year teacher and having all this happen to you and having to figure out everything. Um, so we've, we've stepped up our mentoring of those teachers and trying to make sure that they're supported in their efforts to teach in a way that even veteran teachers are trying to figure out day by day. Um, each one of them in the first two thirds of the year, um, if we had had this meeting the day before we closed down, I still would have recommended them to move forward on the contract. They certainly have strengths. Um, each of them is willing to ask for help, looking for improvements, um, trying to make sure that they're putting in the effort and doing it correctly. So I would have, um, I would have recommended them before this time and during this time, they, they still definitely have shown a desire to do this well and stay committed and figure it out. So it's been, it's been pretty good.
Brought by fire.
Yeah. I mean, first year teaching is hard enough, you know?
Well, it makes, makes me feel really old. I had Sawyer when he was a freshman in, at Lincoln, so, as a student, so. All right. Let's, let's vote.
Maria, yes.
Did we already vote? No.
No, we just had a motion and a second.
And then discussion, okay.
Yeah.
I will vote in favor. Al?
Maria, yes.
Wayne, yes. Yes.
Wayne, yes. Walter, yes.
Okay. How about Andy? Andy get in there?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, okay, good. Very good. To approve the following teachers for a third probationary contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools, Andrew Grady, grade six, eighth math.
Yep, um, again, we've had Andrew on board for two years. Um, he's shown a lot of development, a lot of desire to do things well, um, especially over this last year. Um, the piece I should, Craig can probably speak to this a little bit more, but we're also working with our professional evaluation committee to make sure that anything um, that we're looking at this year doesn't violate any associations or laws or pieces. Craig, I don't know if you wanna step in on that, but um, whether or not people are held or not held, um, again, Andrew, I would have recommended for a third year anyway to continue his um, his teaching with us and um follow through on what he's been doing, so.
He's a young, he's a young teacher and if I remember him right.
Yes, he is. This is his second year teaching with us and.
First job, right, okay. Okay, he gets along with the middle school kid, those.
Yes, he does.
Three years, two years probation to continuing contract as well as the evaluation system that we weren't able to complete actively this year. Is that what you were?
Yes.
Yeah, I, and I think we're still good. I still think it, it's my nomination, but it's Lindsay's recommendation through me. It's, it's kind of a funny path to follow, but as long as Lindsay supports it, I certainly would and would urge you to as well.
Yes, I think we would, so. Okay.
So moved by Wayne Powellin?
Yeah, Al votes yes on this.
Maria votes yes.
Who seconded?
Uh, Walt will second it and vote yes.
Andy votes yes.
Yeah.
Wayne votes yes.
Very good. To approve the following teacher for a first. To approve the following teacher for a first continuing contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Uh, Bridget Humphrey, grade ones, and Ben Pennard, grade five.
And then, Al, we have a, we have a third, Julia Hansberry, who is the speech pathologist, shared between Jefferson and Nobleboro.
What's, what's her last name?
Hansberry.
Okay.
So, this one, this is moving our, our teachers from a probationary contract into a continuing contract um, position, and so I'll speak a little bit more about each of them. Bridget's been with us uh, in first grade for three years now, and she has, I think, been a pretty incredible teacher um, in first grade. She's great with the little kids, she's constantly working with her team, um, and first grade teachers at other schools as well, to make sure that what she's doing is, you know, spot on and academically sound and that she's really staying on top of best practices. Um, she's, we knew, I think Maria, you might have been in on her interview, I think we knew back in her interview she was gonna be um, a stellar teacher to replace Celeste, who had been in that position, and she had, Bridget has lived up to that. I have absolutely no hesitation whatsoever in recommending her to move to continuing contract. Um, and I think Sue Fawcett's nodding her head, and I can't see Anne, but she's worked with her as well, and I think we'd all be on board with that.
I've heard good things from the community as well, so.
Yes.
Lindsay, I would agree with you one hundred percent. She has been phenomenal, um, to support special education students as well. Yeah.
And she's already moved into sort of a leadership role, um, across the AOS with the grading support team and some other initiatives, so um, she's, she has a promising future, I believe.
Great. Who is this, Anne, too?
That's right, that was me chiming in.
She does a great job.
Yeah. Great.
Um, Ben Pennard has been, has been in the school longer than I have, way longer. He was an ed tech supporting student, he had moved through many different grades. Um, he has been teaching for three years and I've moved him from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade with the same group of kids all those years, and he has been extremely flexible and his growth in his teaching skills has been wonderful. It, it's been wonderful. He's another one who really works hard to find out, you know, make sure that he's running things by me. Um, he's working with his team, seeking advice, um, and has some, you know, data-driven results that we can see where students make progress in his class with, with their, with their learning. He works with Andrew Grady, who we just spoke about a minute ago, and they swap kids around and move to make sure the kids are getting the instruction they need. So, um, Ben has done wonderful. I observed a lesson from him earlier this year when we were in session that just, it could have been a show lesson on how to, how to do this, how to blend your instructional and, um, components, your engagement activities, your timing, chunking your lessons. Um, the routines were clear, the kids were looking to, um, use a certain strategy. He had it posted on the back wall, not a single one of them looked at it, but was reciting it, using it, you know, implementing it in the classroom, and it was a really, really well-done lesson, uh, and I pop into his classroom among others quite a bit, and he's, he's really working to hold that standard all the time in his classes. So, again, with Ben, I think it's a great, um, great thing to move him from probationary to continuing contract and keep him. And maybe let him even teach the same grade twice, two years in a row.
Really happy to hear that.
How about Julia?
Julian's come to us, uh, she has a, she's our speech language pathologist. She's fifty percent between us and Nobleboro. She is a fantastic pathologist. She has some great therapeutic, um, skills and strategies. One of her strengths, which makes her a great fit for Jefferson, is her knowledge base that works with our pathways program. She has not just articulation, um, skills, but she has a wide variety of um, social pragmatic skills as well, which have come in very handy to, to cover the needs in that program as well. So, I would again highly recommend Julian going to a continuing contract from probationary.
Now, will that carry, how about, how will that carry on to, uh, in Nobleboro? Do they, uh, is she in the same situation there, as far as?
You'll be on their agenda for Monday night.
Okay, okay. All right, good. All right, we need a motion.
So moved by Wayne Powellin?
I'll second it by Al. All in favor? Yes, for Al.
Wayne votes, Wayne votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria, yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Next item is the, um, BRCTC cooperative agreement. Everybody had a chance to look at that and read through it?
So let, let me chime in, Al. I, I think.
Go ahead.
I know that it was on the share drive, and this is a, this is a tricky conversation. And Walter, feel free to chime in, because we're gonna go hearken back to the AOS. AOS without reservation supports the Bath Regional Technical Vocational School. However, tonight, I'm not recommending that you approve the cooperative agreement because of the way that it's structured and the assumptions that are being made by Bath, that this is an AOS function as opposed to an individual town function. Rick has reached out to the Department of Education and to Drummond Woodson seeking guidance and interpretation, both of the lead, of the interlocal agreement and of the cooperative agreement. I think it's in the interest of Bath to look at AOS ninety-three as a single entity with one member on their board. But when we talk about the responsibilities of the AOS as opposed to the responsibilities of the town, the town is responsible for the vocational education, not the AOS. This agreement is structured so that Bath is making an assumption that they can change the interpretation of our interlocal agreement, and with that language, I can't recommend that you approve it. It won't affect our students flowing through Lincoln to Bath. It's, it's kind of an arcane piece of, um, politics, if you will, and Rick, I don't know if you wanna chime in on that, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I think that, you know, what it, what we've said to Bath is really, if you look at our AOS, which is a little bit different than, than Booth Bay, Booth Bay has a high school, so that gives them a different, different standing. And their superintendent, uh, sits on the board, Jeff Burrows, who is the Lincoln principal and essentially the executive officer, the superintendent of Lincoln Academy, does not have a vote on the board at Bath. However, I do, or Rick does, but we don't send the students there automatically. Those, those students go to, um, Coney, if they go to, to Erskine, they go to, to Bath, if they go to Lincoln. Some in the past have gone to mid-coast. So, for tonight, we, we wanna reconcile and work out and agree that we support vocational education, but this agreement is serving Bath and not serving our communities in the structure of our district. And trust me, we'll come back to it.
Thank you for that clarification.
And what, what, what to, to what degree are we required to provide vocational? Because if we decide not to enter into an agreement with Bath because it's gonna cost us more money or for whatever reason, those students still have access to vocational, they just choose Erskine Academy and go through Coney versus choosing Lincoln Academy. Is this, what, what would be wrong with that way of thinking?
I, that, I think that's, that's what we're trying to get from Drummond Woodson. I don't think our students could still, I think, go to Lincoln Academy, flow to Bath, but if we don't approve the agreement, we don't sit on their board and vote on their funding, but if you remember when Julie came to speak to us, it was almost as if they were asking for permission to charge you, but also reading the statute that says whether you agree or not, we can ask for this funding.
Yeah. Uh, Wayne, I think what we should do is make a motion to disapprove this and then have a further discussion about, um, about the vocational education as a whole, because it's, it's two completely different things. Uh, what Rick and I had found out, uh, months ago when we were talking about, um, the vocational transportation, the reason why the town is responsible for it is because, because of a poor legislation on, they're calling, instead of calling the high school the sending unit, they're calling the town the sending unit. And so, that's what gives the authority of Lincoln Academy to charge us, you know, fifty bucks per person per day to transport. Um, you know, legislatively, that needs to be fixed, um, so that this, that the secondary education school becomes the sending unit. Um, but I, I do have some concerns, you know, I find vocational, uh, education extremely important. Um, and I wanna make sure that our students have the opportunity to go to, uh, to the best place possible. Um, but at the same time, I would hate, uh, for the way that it's being funded, um, instead of it going through legislation like it should, what they're trying to do is say, you know, we're not gonna charge you very much, you know, it's probably gonna be less than ten thousand, um, we're only gonna charge you for the extra. But no one knows if the extra is based off their two seventy-nine, or if the extra is based off last year's budget. Um, and so, in the long run, it would be an easy fix for them if we agreed to say yes. Uh, but the fix really needs to be legislation, especially for here in Jefferson, where we have uh, kids going from Lincoln Academy to Virginia Military Institute. And, you know, and so, um, at least in Maine, we need to make sure that the legislation tells us what we need to do uh, when it comes to, uh, secondary education and, and their vocational experience.
Oh. I believe that VOTEC is extremely important, and not to sound extremely ignorant or sexist, but I know very little about the programs. Just being female. Sorry. So, but I'm also a mother of young men. So, you know, we're just now looking at this topic, and, and Walt brought something up is, to me, is what is the quality of the programming? Um, I think as a mom, as a educator, that, that's always important, but I know very little about the topics of each.
Yeah.
Well, individual programs that are offered.
Well, a good example is the legislation said this year that, uh, they're going to require, because vocational education is very important, instead of focusing on the high school experience and improving their vocational education, what they've decided to do is make it mandatory for seventh and eighth graders to have the availability.
Oh, availability.
The problem is.
Eighth grade?
Yes, the problem is, you really can't do anything until you're sixteen. But, again, we're getting, I think we should vote on, on, uh, the memorandum or, and then move on to a conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna take some, yeah, I agree with you. I mean, I think it's very important, and I think knowing, and I think what Maria said, even knowing more about the programs and deciding, I mean, if we were sending kids to, to Coney from Erskine, right, do we have an agreement with them? Do we, I don't know.
I'm, I'm following up on that. Um, I don't, there is an agreement, the AOS has one vote, there are four students there. I don't know if that agreement has been signed in the past, and it has not been presented to me to sign currently. But I'll follow up on that, Al.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we can, maybe we can table this and, and try to, um, set aside, uh, certain block of time, maybe in a meeting, and, uh, and try to flesh it out. I think it's be something better when we can do this in person, if we can.
Al, I tend to. I know, it needs, you need to vote on it, up or down about the cooperative.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then, but, but we are still waiting, awaiting guidance from Drummond and from, uh, the state CTE director about what AOS ninety-three, specifically what our, what the AOS ninety-three standing is with regard to this issue. Craig and I believe the AOS has no standing in here, but that's our, um, interpretation of it. So, you, you'll need to come back to this, I'm quite sure.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll entertain a motion on this now.
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement for the Bath Regional Career and Technical Center Advisory Committee.
I second that motion. And recommending that you vote no.
I agree.
Yeah, I vote no. Al?
Andy, I vote no.
Wayne votes no.
Maria will vote no.
Walter, no.
Good.
So, thank, thank you all for listening, and Maria, I just wanna come back to what you had said, as far as quality goes, I think Bath, mid-coast, Coney, I think the quality is there. Um, the vocational programs are highly monitored, this, the staff are good. Um, I think that it goes back to some of what Walter said is there is an emphasis on get, getting seventh and eighth graders' experience in vocational education, and that kind of translates into a tour of the school, but then the kids cannot attend a vocational program until their sophomore year of, of high school. So, it's just, it's just too far out for kids who are looking for that, um, career path.
Okay, so as a, as a mom who's a mom of an almost sixteen-year-old, we actually have an appointment with his high school to talk about, you know, which path he's going to take, and I think VOTEC is going to be it. It is, one of my questions is, so when I say the quality of the program, you know, whatever they offer, you want it to be really good instruction, but also the variety of instruction. So, are some of these schools offering more than others?
Yes.
Yes, different.
And I think that's part of what Wayne was referring to, is look to see what Coney offers, and then he would go to Erskine, look to see what Lincoln, I'm sorry, what Bath offers, and then flow through Lincoln to get to Bath.
Okay.
So.
The way I understand it is if you go, like, for instance, if you go to Lincoln and Bath doesn't have the program you want, you can go to mid-coast over.
Not anymore.
That's done?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was two years ago. Um, that, they, they end up dropping the Rockland. Um, but again, that's, that's a, that's a great conversation to get in with. If, if you want to do a certain emergency medicine, then you have to make sure that the high school that your child chooses is supported, which doesn't make any sense, because the high school has to support the vocational school, but we're the sending unit. And so, um, and so, they need to switch it so that the high school becomes the sending unit, because ultimately, there's nothing regulatory that says a kid from Lincoln Academy can't make Jefferson pay to go to, uh, Fulton to the vocational school.
That is, that's, that's correct. It's in the logistics, you're exactly right.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda curious, is like, you know, what if Coney offers like this much, and Bath offers this much, and my kid lives in Jefferson?
Well, they.
You know, it makes you wonder.
They do, and, and then my other, and this is more of a pet peeve than anything else, but Erskine charges the same daily rate, so at three fifty, four dollars, to send their, to send our kids from Erskine to their vocational school. Um, Lincoln Academy, because we're the sending unit, they break down the cost of transportation and divide it by the number of AOS kids. And so, we end up paying fifty bucks a day, sixty bucks a day, seventy bucks a day per kid, depending on, depending on the month, for the transportation piece.
Right.
For the ride.
Wow.
And so, um, you know, and quite frankly, I said, you know, we're not gonna pay this, but because of the way that the legislation is written, it's, I, it's our responsibility. And so, I've been working on that.
So I've been working on that, but haven't really gotten anywhere at this point. But the question that I have, Rick, and Craig, is when it, when it comes to secondary education and, and the vocational experience is, we definitely want to make that available. But are we required to make it available at every, all 12 of the vocational centers? And, you know, if we're not required to use Holton, then why would we be required to use Bath? And so if, if Maria's child decides that she wants, or he wants to do vocational, then we say, okay, well, these are the schools that offer that.
Well, I, I think there is a core, core program throughout all, most, if not all of the technical centers. But there are specific programs that a regional center may have that other regional centers may not have. That, that was the Rockland one with, which I believe had advanced firefighting and Bath did not have. I believe that was the issue with that. But I think there is a, a set core of, you know, of programs throughout all of them. So you wouldn't necessarily have to send somebody to Holton when a program is right across in Bath. But if the program wasn't offered in Bath and the student wanted to do it, then I believe, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at it from the other way. If Bath says, you know, you're going to have to pay us $10,000 per student.
The effect of, of not doing this, of not signing the cooperative agreement is not clear, Walter. And, and again, we're looking to find out, can Bath actually deny access to, to students from AOS 93 because, because of this? I, I don't know. I, I can't imagine that that would be okay. I just can't. But am I?
Well, I, I would think that they would be able to. And my, both as a, you know, as a member of the community and, and a member of this school committee, I would say that's okay.
Well, just, just remember this, their funding is 279-generated.
Yes, exactly.
It's student-generated, so it would not be in their best interest to deny students because they're going to lose out.
Yes. But if they did, our students are losing out because they still have several other options.
Jefferson students, correct.
Well, and the fact of the matter is, that's a public school, so I don't know that they can deny.
I, I would be very surprised to hear, yes.
If they were a private school, say it was Lincoln Academy that had the program, Lincoln could probably deny if they wanted to, but there again, they wouldn't for the same financial reason. But if we have to do an agreement with Bath, then, and say Craig ends up being our board representative, so now Craig's going to go to Bath, how long is it going to be before he's even going to Coney and to Rockland, to all these other meetings, for all these other different agreements, for all these other schools? It makes absolutely no sense to me.
Yeah, you would have to. And the thing is that, you know, from my point of view, it's, the agreement needs to be a cooperative between all of them. So, because the way that it's working now is they were looking at charging us, you know, per student population. Well, half of our population goes somewhere else, you know, so you can't do it that way. And then, you know, and then the other is, as you get the other communities involved when it comes to financing, you know, putting in a couple of new lifts into the automotive section now becomes much more reasonable to do for the school because all of the towns are paying for it as well. You know, putting in a, you know, another center for the EMTs becomes much easier for the school because the towns are sharing all that cost. When the towns might necessarily not have a say-so and, and how they're spending that money.
Well, what it seems to me is, is that Bath really, the problem is they want to spend more than the ED 279 funds. And the people of Bath don't want to spend the extra money. They'd be fine for just their students, but they're not fussy for the citizens of Bath to pay for the citizens of Jefferson's kids that go there in the amount that's above ED 279. So by de facto, we're almost, they're almost making us join Bath school district only on the vocational side. That's basically what this is. And so there's no incentive for them to try to operate within the ED 279 as it, what it's intended for.
No, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, but with Camden, they charge us for vocational education, but it's based off the number of students that we have at Camden, not the number of students that we have going to.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, Rick and I went down and met with those people about that.
Yeah, and so in Camden, where it's two people, you know, it's not a huge impact, but you take Lincoln Academy where the majority of the students go. You know, now we're paying for, paying for a service that we use, absolutely. But pay for a service that we don't use.
And to be absolute, to be absolutely clear, the, the Camden issue, those kids don't go to the vocational school, but there is statutory language that allows the CTE center to charge students of the sending high schools. Your two kids go to YSD High School, whatever that is. That gives them the route to charge you. But this is not exactly the same scenario though.
No.
It would be if our kids went to Bath directly.
Well, actually, not even that, Wayne, because they're funding their, well, I guess, I guess in a manner.
What would it wind up being is Lincoln Academy charging us for our students who have the availability to go to Bath.
Well, say that again, what would be?
So it's, instead of Bath charging us, it would be Lincoln Academy charging us for the students that have the availability to go to Bath. With the, what this cooperative agreement does is it takes Lincoln Academy completely out of the picture. And the only piece that Lincoln Academy has is they provide the transportation to, to the Bath CTE.
That's correct, because they're not a voting member of the advisory committee.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Do we have high school homeschool students who go to CTE?
No.
We have the, oh, no, that was just Lincoln Academy, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that is, that's, that's a good question. I think in order to go to the Volk School, they would have to enroll in school. And I believe you, that would cancel out the home, the homeschool because it's a proportionality thing, Maria.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out why are they charging it by town, by the town that you, you know? And I was thinking, well, maybe it's because they include homeschooling or something, but that's.
No. There was regulatory guidance done in about 10 years ago. And what it's really for is the larger cities who have multiple schools. And so what it says is, the city is responsible for, is the sending unit. So it doesn't matter what, what school they go to, to go to CTE or vocational school. The town's responsible to pay for it.
All right.
Yeah, but in our case where it's just the opposite, now we have a bunch of tiny towns that send people to one school. But under the way that it's written, it's still saying, it's not the high school's responsibility. It's the sending city, or in our case, Jefferson.
Right.
Okay.
All right, well, I think this is going to bear some more conversations, more time involved.
Future topics.
Yeah, one of the other things that we could put on future topics is the current grading system. I would love to see the A through F come back with honor roll and something that kids can understand, parents can understand, and teachers can understand.
That's going to take, I'm going to put that under the vocational thing. Let me just say that I know that that's on, that's on, in the hopper, on the agenda. Where we are with the closure, though, we have just not taken time to, to address that. But we did promise to come back to that.
Yes, and before we close, I'd like to thank all of you for, for what you're doing. I mean, it is, you know, some people think it's a lot easier, you know, you get to work from, from your desk at home. But, you know, when you're working from your desk at home, it's very difficult to reach in your drawer and get out what you need, or to talk to the person that you're looking for. And especially since the vacation, since the, the break, the, the quality of education has, has gone up dramatically. And, and I think, you know, you can see it as you talk to the different kids at different levels and really appreciate all the hard work that, that you, all of you are doing.
Walter, thank you very much. And the teachers really have stepped up. I mean, they really have come through. It means a lot. So thank you for saying that.
Now, as a, as a homeschool mom and a public school mom, I totally appreciate everything that they pay for. I second what Walter says. Absolutely. Good work, Jefferson.
Thank you guys for recognizing that.
All right.
So Al, if I may chime in, the next item on the agenda is the preliminary FY21 budget. I think we had talked about scheduling a meeting, a public budget meeting for next Monday.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think that's our next order of business. I'll post an agenda. Rick will post a meeting and we'll Zoom the public budget. Mon, Monday, the 11th at, at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Sounds good.
I'll get that posted on the website, school website.
Are we also going to discuss, agree, approve the complete schedule, the May 11th meeting with the, I mean, the May 26th meeting with the Budget Committee?
I think we can do that at that meeting, can't we?
Well, if we was to do it now, we could actually post it or, or we could give Rick the authority to reach out and see what the availability was so that Rick could post it this coming week. So if he was to call Wayne Ferrin and Wayne said, "May 26th not going to work for us, but May 20th is going to work, we still got time to post it and we could do it by 20th," or whatever. So it gives them more flexibility to get it posted. You know, he can talk to Wayne and he can get the meeting posted, so we can do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, I agree.
Clarify, you said May 26th, not May 6th, right?
May 26th.
Thank you.
Is the tentative one, that's the day after Memorial Weekend. If the Budget Committee, if they can get a quorum on that day.
And remember, this will be, again, will be a Zoom meeting. We can have Zoom meetings, well, until, until, or we're required to. The town meetings and stuff, until social distancing is relaxed, we can't really have any face-to-face meetings. But this puts a plan into place that we could, we could change if we had to. But I, I agree that it's best to sort of put it out there so people have an understanding about what, what we're trying to do.
Right. And then.
Still having a May 11th, was it May 11th I saw?
Yes.
Okay, so May 11th and May 26th.
Yes.
Well, May 11th for sure. May 26th is contingent to find Rick reaching out to the Budget Committee and seeing what day works for them.
Right.
It gives Rick the authority to start actually posting it this week if that's what he needs to do.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good.
Yeah, and then.
What our plan was.
Would, would it be possible to set up a station, like at the library? So if a couple of the budget members were unable to access and don't get the Zoom concept?
That's very easy. I can even spread them out. I could do one big screen in the library and have people sit around and look at it, or I can do multiple locations, so they can have their own screen.
Yeah, if we did two or three computers.
Yeah. I just can't in the same room because the feedback doesn't work. But I have enough space among the computer lab, the library, the lobby, et cetera, to move them around. So we can definitely set up some supports for people that way.
Yeah, that way in case there's, you know, issues with, you know, it's, it's difficult to understand the process if you haven't done it yet. And that, and that way they can just step on in and feel comfortable and be able to speak.
Sure.
And Rick should let Wayne Ferrin know that so he can notify, you know, let his members know that that's an option to him.
Yep.
Because that might be a hangup for him.
So I, you know, we're, I guess I want to ask you, I've sent out the Zoom, the Zoom links to all of you. Is there, am I not sending them to the right addresses? I usually just send them to the AOS 93 addresses, but.
Yeah. So for me, Rick, what had happened is I think, because I, I forwarded all my emails to one account and there's something in the link broke that I need to fix tomorrow. And so, and then that way I'll have access to, to the page and everything. But today I didn't. And so all your emails were coming through except for those links.
Okay.
And mine.
I didn't respond because I thought it said, "Don't respond unless you didn't get it."
Right, and you were, you were, the first one there, Maria was first, first in line.
And mine should have worked. It looked like it's going to work. I got computer problems, I guess, because it actually says that that particular one is still loading now, so.
Okay.
I didn't get any link whatsoever.
Okay.
All right.
It, it's hard to manage all the information. They come in and I put them into a file and then I have to sort through them to get them. It's, it's a new system for sure.
Yes, and for the Monday, the 11th, if we, if you could email out the, the budget stuff, that way we can look at it without going through the page if, if necessary.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll email it to you, but of course I will present it just like you saw tonight and we'll.
Yeah, that way we can have it printed out.
Absolutely.
And also just.
Anything else?
Yes, Al, just FYI, I will be late to that meeting because that is the Noble Borough Board meeting. But I will, I will be there as soon as I can.
Right. Very good. We're going to adjourn this meeting.
There were no, there were no questions. Alex Viallo and Kathleen Peabody were attendees, but there are no questions in the question and answer box.
I'd just like to put out before we sign off, I appreciate every single one of you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming back, Maria. I knew you hadn't expected.
I know. I had plans for tonight, but I was like, forget it, girlfriend.
Yeah, you should be cooking turkey tonight.
Yeah, turkey.
All right, well, thank you all. I need Al to host this.
All right, thank you.
Good night.